Mostly white Heritage Foundation. The CEO, Barry Beasley, says the school's new location in the heart of Franklin, just south of Nashville, makes a statement.
Way back in the day, this was really a redlined community where, you know, African Americans could not own or rent here. To move it here and to know that this schoolhouse that tells an important part of history during a time of segregation is now in this incredible downtown historic Franklin, two blocks off the square. It's very symbolic.
After some complicated parking maneuvers, the school is finally ready to be unloaded. Georgia Harris and other former students gather nearby to share memories.
Well, you know, the whole school is all kin. We were all cousins because it was a small community and, you know, there was no electricity at that time. We had a pot-bellied stove that the boys would come early and make the fire. The teacher was, I thought, was really smart, you know. We had, she played piano, so she taught us how to read music. She had classical music she played for us.
Sisters Mary and Diane Atkinson remembered the music, too.
We learned traditional hymns. Jesus loves me this I know, oh, the Bible tells me so, that songs like that.
We used to have to walk to school in snow up to our knees and stuff. We didn't have a bus to go to school, so we had to walk about two miles to school. You wore what clothes you had.
We didn't have shoes sometimes, and Mama would get the shoes from the white people's houses and cut the heels off, so we would wear them as regular shoes. Yeah, it was really hard. It was hard, yeah.
Our dad was born in 1920, and our mom was in 1924. But they attended the school there.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting of March 26, 2024. At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Adam Hughes to the podium and invite him to come forward and tell us about your church. Pastor Hughes, I invite you to tell us about your church and then to lead us in prayer. When Mr. Hughes is ready to lead us in prayer, I invite all who so desire to stand for the prayer and to remain standing to join the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for the invitation to be here. Really appreciate it. It was awesome to get that letter in the mail. I hope you won't hold it against me. Our church is in the city of Salem. But we are proud, my family and our proud Glemberg Highlander family. So we're very, we have two girls in the Glemberg schools, and we're very thankful to be a part of that community. We're just a church that's doing our best to share the love of Christ with our community and doing all that we can to let people see that through not just our words, but through our actions. And so we're very blessed to do what we get to do. Just been watching God do some incredible things, and now I'm grateful to be able to be here with you all. So thank you again for the invitation. I really, really do appreciate it. So I'd love just to pray for you and pray for everyone here today, and we'll get started. So let's pray.
Thank you.
God, I just want to thank you so much for, Lord, I pray that we wouldn't take for granted the fact that we had the ability to wake up today. Lord, to put our feet on the ground and to breathe and to enjoy another day here in what you've created for us. Lord, I thank you for the lives and the families, the positions, the careers, everything that you provided for every person in this room and all the people that are represented by the worlds that every person in here touches and represents. And Father, I pray for this meeting today, God, all of those avenues of life collide in this one place. And Lord, you seek to use every person, you have a purpose for every person that's here, a purpose for every career, a purpose for every family, a purpose for every individual person. And so, Lord, I pray that today that those things, as they intersect here, God, I pray would do so in a way that God builds this community, builds this part of our state, builds this part of our country, and, Lord, helps us to be the type of people that you need us to be. And, Lord, regardless of where we all stand on spiritual issues and what we believe, Lord, the God, the one thing that we can all agree on is that we want to see the best for the people around us. And so, Lord, I just pray that today that, God, you would allow this meeting to be one that would allow it to benefit the people in this community and in this county. And, Lord, I pray that it would help us be set apart and stand apart from others, God, that we would do it so well, God, with excellence, that other people would take notice in God, and that would give us the ability to pour into others that we wouldn't even expect. And so, Jesus, I just pray that today that you would lead this time. I pray, God, that it would honor you. And, Lord, I pray that you would use it for, again, for the greater building of this community. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting for March 26, 2024. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and again on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Rono County's website at www.ronocountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, Opening Ceremonies. Number one, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Ms. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here. Thank you. Item B, Requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda, fellow board members?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C, Briefings. Presentation of the Proposed Fiscal Year 24-2025 Operating Budget and Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 through 2034 Capital Improvement Program. Chair recognizes Richard Kaywood, County Administrator. Welcome.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will say this might be a little bit mislabeled. It's under briefings, but it's not especially short, so it does take a little while to go through. But it is really my privilege to present to you the proposed FY25 operating budget and the 25 through 34 CIP. I will also say that we've historically called this the County Administrator's Proposed Budget, but in some sense, it's really not that because we've been working with the board for many, many months to get your input and your objectives when it comes to budget development. So this has certainly been done in deep collaboration with the board throughout that time. And not only with the budget, but maybe even going a little bit deeper. I've been county administrator for a little over two years, and there's kind of been three themes that I know of from our board. It's there's a strong desire to give back to our citizens in the form of tax relief. We want aggressive economic development, and we want to maintain high-quality services. So this whole budget is built with that in mind. And I'll start by detailing what we have done here recently with tax relief. So I'm going back to FY23, which, for those of you who don't deal in local government budgets all the time, that actually starts in 2022, July 1st. So we're going back a little bit in time. But that was in the period just coming out of COVID when we had very rapid increases in the value of our cars. And had we not done some tax relief, we would have brought in, you know, a whole lot of extra money in personal property. So we decided as a county to return the bulk of that money to our citizens, and we did so by increasing personal property tax relief on the first $20,000 in value of the vehicles, very consistent with what the state did. And for many, many people, this resulted in sharply lower bills, and that was, again, to the tune of a little over $12 million. And the budget we're in now, which we were developing this time last year, we did some more of that. So we continued to give some additional tax relief on personal property taxes. But then we also reduced the rate from 3.50 per hundred to 3.40. This was the first reduction, or actually, the first change in this tax rate since the mid-'80s, and that was actually an increase. So I don't know if we had ever decreased this before, but it's been a long time since it had been touched. But more significantly, the largest real estate tax rate reduction in the county's history happened in the last budget cycle, moving from $1.09 per hundred to $1.06. We're going to detail that a little more thoroughly here in a few minutes. We also reduced the tax rate on machinery and tools. And then finally, for many of our small businesses, we raised the threshold where you still get to pay the minimum fee for a beat pole at $50 to $150,000, which, again, helps many of our small businesses. In the current budget cycle for the FY25 budget, we're recommending a continued reduction in that real estate tax rate from $1.06 to $1.04. That yields additional $2.4 million. And when you put this all together, you see the picture we're painting, and I'm kind of looking at this a little bit of analogies. We have a stream of revenue, but we're diverting some of that revenue back to our citizens. So when you add everything up over, you know, the last two budget cycles and the proposed, that's over $22 million in total tax relief for our citizens. I will point out that this is really two different types of reductions. So first is the long-term rate reduction that we've done. I think we all know that car values are starting to decrease, kind of return a little bit more to normal. So there were certainly some elements of some of those earlier personal property tax reductions that were a little more one-time in nature. However, the rate reduction is permanent. But we do take in revenues. It's always important to remember why, to build a strong community. And I kind of look at this as five pillars of that community, central to which is education. You know, we have a large school system, very well-regarded statewide with excellent results and over 13,000 students. And that's the number one place that we put our revenue, followed closely by public safety. Again, a very robust public safety infrastructure in the county, and I think this is one way that we really are set apart for many counties in the state, especially many of our neighbors. We have an extensive public park and library system. There is one area of growth that we are seeing that's becoming increasingly important and maybe not quite as positive of an indicator, but we do have more folks than ever before utilizing services that we provide out of our social services department with an increasing number of children in foster care and then more people eligible for supplemental benefits. I will say many of the foster care cases ultimately have their roots in some of the drug addiction problem we have in the greater Burnick Valley, and you're going to hear another presentation about that later today. And then finally, to end on a positive note on this slide, we are seeing an increase in development activity all across the spectrum, be that single-family homes, apartments, commercial retail, and industrial development, which all bodes well for our future. Now, taking a little more detailed look at our real estate tax rate, we didn't want to make the graph too long, but if we went back in time a little bit further, this chart actually starts in the year 2000. Our peak real estate tax rate was $1.15, and that was, again, before this graph. But starting at the year 2000 into present, there have been some adjustments, and each of the green bars indicates the year in which a change was made. So between the 2000 and 2001 budget cycle, a penny was shaved off. And then when you get over to 2005 and '06, another penny was shaved off, followed the next year by two cents. That took us to the $1.09 we had seen until the recent past. And we'll all remember that FY07 budget year, that was really the beginning of the Great Recession. The county actually had several years of negative revenue growth. That rate was held constant, but the changes that you see in the previous budget cycle and the one we're working on now, that does do represent by far and away the largest real estate tax reductions in the county's history. Looking a little more broadly, when we think about the general budget environment that we have to work with this year, we're all aware that we do have rising real estate assessments. In many ways, that's a good thing because the value of folks' homes, generally speaking in America, represents their number-one source of wealth that they have, and it certainly indicates a strong demand for folks to want to live in the county. Those are very good things. Of course, the drawback to that is that does result in a higher tax bill, which is one of the motivations to reduce the rate. But again, all things being equal, I would much rather live in a community with rising assessments than falling because falling assessments are bad for everybody, actually. We do have continued volatility in personal property. I think that no one really knows exactly what the new normal is going to be for car values. There's still some, a lot of instability in the market because the new cars that weren't sold are not today's fairly new used cars, so that's having an effect. But then now there is a much better supply of new cars. Values are starting to come down. We just don't know at what rate they will fall, so we have to be very aware of that. And we have very high inflation, and I'm going to show you this on the next slide, detailing that from a local government perspective. And at least from what I can see, that has not ended yet. And then I think on top of that, a great deal of general economic uncertainty. For the last two years, folks have been predicting imminently there's a recession on the horizon. I'm still looking forward. Haven't seen it yet. Hope it doesn't come. But I do think that all the experts' ability to predict what's going to happen next in the economy have been maybe not the best here as of late, and we certainly don't have a crystal ball either. And just looking at inflation, and I want to say that we shamelessly lifted this slide straight out of Chesterfield County's budget presentation. We did give them credit, but we did not make this. This is a very specific set of data that the feds publish, and it's called the State and Local Government Deflator. But the way you read the chart is that positive numbers represent the loss of buying power. So the green, which represents the long-term average, sits at just above 3%. And what that means is that year over year, if your revenue was the same number as the year before, you would lose just over 3% of your buying power. And that's kind of the long-term average. But you can see the past two years, '22 and '23, are the highest on this chart that goes all the way back to 1992, which just happened to be the year I entered the full-time professional workforce, the two highest years of local government inflation at 7% and 8% respectively. Now, this data source indicates that 2024 is going to be much better. I'll believe it when I see it because this is not in the bank yet. And then they are predicting a return to normal in 2025. The reason this looks different than the general CPI is that we buy a different basket of goods and services, if you want to call it that. So we're not buying a lot of groceries, and we don't spend a lot of our money buying homes or on rent. We buy different things, and the inflation for those different things looks a little different than what an individual homeowner might see, for example. But the last two cycles or two years have been very hard on our, that inflation's been just as hard on us as it has anybody else, probably a good way to say it. Now, as we roll into the development of the budget, we're going to talk about the foundational elements, and I'm really pleased to show you a very different graphical way to look at this that I really like. You could think of this as a dollar bill. It's the same shape, but it looks a lot better without having any bleed-through image. But of the $260 million in the proposed budget, just over $100 million of that goes to our local public schools. I will point out, for anybody who watches these things closely, that we normally think of that as being roughly 42% of our budget. The reason this number is a little bit lower at 38.5% is that this counts all of our revenue. So, for example, the money we take in for our social services programs that we pay directly out as benefits are not revenues we share, nor are things like reimbursement for a VDOT project that, you know, revenues, we don't really have discretion in how we spend it. So looking at that larger part, the schools are a slightly smaller percentage than what we normally think of. But then next in line is public safety, which is a very large part of our budget. And again, really what separates us in a lot of ways from many of our neighbors, but certainly that is a higher-cost item. And then we get into some smaller things like community and human services, which is where we have parks and rec and libraries and things like that. And then you'll notice in this view, what we spend on capital and debt services are relatively small pieces of that whole pie. So you're looking at just over five, right at 5.5%. And then a much, much smaller amount into regional programs. So the obvious question here is what is support functions, right? So we're going to talk about that a little bit, and I'm not going to go into this in fine detail. But the biggest piece of this is for our communications and information technology infrastructure that we need to operate in the modern world. Our constitutional officers outside of public safety, so the sheriff and his operation is counted over in public safety, but just the rest of that required constitutional officer operations. So you have things like Commissioner Revenue, the Treasurer, Commonwealth's Attorney, that all lives there. Internal Services, which is things like our risk management, some of our benefits that aren't tied directly to salary, leave cash-in that we'll talk about here in a little bit, they live there. We have non-departmental expenses, which is where we actually budget tax relief for the elderly, which is a program we've talked about some here lately, some of our transfers, dues, and membership. And then that last thing is what I think people traditionally think of as just pure overhead. That's actually, the board is in there, I am in there in general administration, things of that nature, human resources, our PIO, the auditor, they all kind of fall in general administration. But this is, you know, that category is just about 13%, of 13% of the whole budget. So on a whole-budget basis, that's actually a little bit less than 2% of the budget ends up in what you might call general overhead or general administration. This next slide I love even more because this is the whole budget proposal on one sheet of paper. I don't think we've ever tried to do that before. And in fact, we've got it all on one sheet of paper, and we've shown it two different ways. So to the left, you can see the view that the left-brain people like that looks like Excel. To the right is the right-brain people like me with boxes because I like this one better. But what this looks at, if you look at our last year's adopted budget at $243 million, you're looking at $260.5 for this year, that's a differential of $17 million. Where are we going to spend the money, right? That's what this chart shows. So $5.8 million of that goes straight to Rono County Public Schools, followed by $5.61 million for public safety. The lion's share of that money in public safety is for pay changes for public safety personnel. General government, $2.61 million, again, largely dedicated to pay changes, and I'll detail here in just a second, and much smaller amounts for everything else. I will point out, even though it's very small on the graph, in the green, you see debt funding model, $530,000. That is what we recently agreed to between us working with Rono County Public Schools for our new 2020-20 debt model and the revenues that are needed to support the two elementary schools and the new CTE center is all wrapped up in that. The key with that number, however, is that that is every year for the foreseeable future, we have to add another $530,000 to support that previous commitment, and that's equivalent to about half a cent on the real estate tax rate. So it looks small on the chart, but it's actually very significant financially. So in terms of pay, this is what all the employees tuned in for. The proposal is to move the public safety anchor by 1.75%. What this means is that for the folks in the earlier part of the grade step system, their pay will increase by 4%. For the folks that are in the latter steps and, you know, the higher end of the grade, they will receive a 3% raise, which is also what we're proposing for all other of our full-time employees. A couple of reasons it was necessary to diverge these numbers. First, we actually did a lot more than we originally committed when it came to public safety pay because when we started the implementation of the new system, we told everybody we were going to keep the anchor salaries constant. But because of rapid inflation, we actually moved them along with other employees. So we were not only raising the system, but we were moving them in with additional raises to get them into the right place. So our public safety employees, in a very deserved way, benefited greatly from that. However, that created a situation now where there's been a significant lag with our other employee population. It's very important to take care of them, too. So we needed to make a little bit of a divergence there. Another important cost for the county that we have to put in the budget this year is an increase in what we owe the Commonwealth for our retirement system, VRS. That rate is set every two years, and we have no choice but to pay. So that's gone up pretty significantly in the last cycle. We are going to offer two health insurance plans this year. Our existing plan, Key Care 1000, we've kept the rates somewhat artificially low the past four or five years. That's no longer financially sustainable, so we're going to continue to offer that plan, but the premiums for that plan are going to have to rise. We're also going to offer what we're calling Key Care 2000, which is a higher deductible version of the same plan. That will actually cost less than what employees are paying today if they choose it. But that is just something that had to give in order to make room for the pay increases that we wanted to add or offer. We are enhancing one of our most popular employee benefits, which is flex leave cash-in. So currently, employees can sell back 40 hours of their total annual leave. They have some minimums they have to keep, but we would propose moving that to 80 hours a year. The nice thing about this is while it does have a cost, we also get the benefit of their labor, right? Because you have to come to work because you're selling back your leave. And particularly, when you look in our public safety ranks, that actually helps us fill operational holes with somebody who is at work as opposed to us trying to make up for their absence when they were otherwise on leave. So that helps. So what really that does is increases that nominal 2,080-hour work year, gets a little bit bigger if you start selling your leave because now you have to have more productive hours. And then the last one is a very good thing, even though it has a cost, is right now, and historically, Rono County has not budgeted for 100% of our positions. We've assumed a certain vacancy rate, and we've become a much more popular employer as of late, so our vacancy rate is lower. And again, I'll talk about this a little more later. So we have to budget a little more for salaries, getting closer to 100% because we've been more full, which is a very good thing. Education is our top priority, especially financially for the county. So these do represent the largest transfer amounts in debt service in the county's history. And I'm going to do a little bit of math to get from this slide to the next one. So if you keep in mind this top member and bottom member, the 92.5 and the 2.18, you see a chart that looks like this because we're not counting the capital transfer here. So that gives us a school transfer of 94.7, which has gone up $27 million since 2016. So you can see, you know, which is generally very, very steady growth. And I would point out that this has happened against a background of school enrollment that has generally trended down in this same period of time. So actually, dollars per student has increased at a faster rate than what you see because, again, generally speaking, either flat or declining enrollment. We also, though, want to make sure that we do our best to continue providing robust services to our citizens. So as part of that, we're increasing funding for fire and rescue overtime. This helps us to keep vehicles in service. We are also going to have to fund the roll-off of the 2021 SAFER grant that is funding some of our fire and rescue personnel today. We are proposing seven new social services positions, but I do want to immediately say that these are largely funded by the Commonwealth because, as I mentioned earlier, that workload is rapidly growing, and they look at us from a formulaic perspective. So if you can imagine, there's only so many cases involving children that can responsibly be handled by one staff member, right? The caseload does matter, and there's certainly been some tragedies around the state in the past when a social worker is trying to, or a child protective services person is trying to look after too many cases. The state's aware of this, so they fund 80% of these positions. We're continuing our support for both our sheriff and police department as they provide SRO services at our public schools, and I think that arrangement's working very well right now. And then we've been hit very hard by expense for contracted vehicle repairs and vehicle maintenance, as anyone who has taken their own car to the shop lately has seen. Couple of other changes. We're eliminating a position that Couple of other changes, we're eliminating a position that used to exist down the hall for me and transferring that over to the Commonwealth attorney. So, that was really an administrative position swap between the two because the Commonwealth attorney's office has a growing caseload and they need some more help, and we were able to eliminate our deputy clerk position. Also, we need to fund some raises for our part-time personnel and then some other small operating expenditures, and again, the vehicle maintenance and repair. I do want to highlight the picture across the bottom. This just shows some of the different types of work we do because I think when most folks picture, if I just went up to somebody and said, "What's a local government employee?" They probably do picture someone sitting at their desk. And certainly about a third or so of our people do have desk jobs, but by far and away, the most common jobs we have in the county are uniform public safety, folks doing solid waste and other things, right? It's not, you know, government office jobs is only a small part of that pie. And that's a nice segue into talking about personnel, and I want to show two very different pictures. So, this is looking at strength in different categories, starting back in two thousand and three through the proposed budget. And what you can see here is very strong growth in public safety and social services, full-time positions, and a much flatter picture with everything else. If we take a little more detailed look at that public safety employment, you'll see by far and away, the biggest area of growth that we have of any department in the county and any public safety department is the fire and rescue department. They've over doubled in size between two thousand and three and the proposed budget. It went from one-oh-two to two-twenty-one. This is due to several factors. One has been the decline, this is a national decline in the prevalence of fire and rescue volunteers. But I also would say the county's grown over this time period. You recall the last census, we were the fastest-growing locality in the region. Our community has aged, which generates more fire and rescue calls. And then quite frankly, the complexity of and the standard of care that's delivered by our fire and rescue personnel has grown a lot in this time period, too. The good news is we're able to provide a lot more to you when we show up. Of course, the bad news from a budget standpoint is our fire and rescue personnel are very expensive. They get paid pretty well, they're expensive to outfit and equip, so just having like one available position in the system, you need, of course, quite a few people underneath of that to staff that twenty-four-seven, and they each have equipment and uniforms and all these other things that have a lot of costs. So, that's a big difference between us and, again, some of our neighbors who have much smaller complements of these type of staff. And then social services, I will point out that we do provide these services for the city of Salem. Salem has never had its own social services operation. So, these numbers are combined for us and what we do as a county, but also what we do for them. They do pay one-hundred percent of their cost, but that's grown. It hasn't doubled over that time period, but it represents our second fastest-growing department. The only other two areas of real growth, and this has mostly been in the, what's getting to be fairly far back in the past before I hit the next slide, is when we opened some of our new larger libraries, they did take more staff to run. So, there's some growth in library staff that's kind of on pause here for a while because we haven't opened a new library for a while. And then also parks and rec. You think we did things like Explore Park, you know, we opened Green Ridge. So, that staffing grew. And if you subtract all of that out so that we're no longer looking at public safety or those two departments that had growth due to growth in services, you get a very different-looking picture. So, this is kind of the everybody else, which I would kind of put more in the administrative and regulatory-type categories. That peak strength was actually back in two thousand and nine. It hit a low point in two thousand and fifteen. There's been some growth since then, but very slow and not back up to where we were in two thousand and nine. And if you take a longer-term historical look at the growth in these categories, this job growth has not kept pace with the growth in population, meaning the county operation has become leaner over that time or more efficient. And you can see that even in this building where, at one point in the past, we were kind of loaded to the gills, parking was a challenge, every office was full. That's not the way this building looks today. There's still a lot of people that work here, but it's not like it was back in this past when we had two-hundred-and-sixty-eight people in these categories. Adding this all together, this just shows the general growth of county personnel over time. I will point out, again, the differences between the current year we're in and the proposed year is completely through the addition of fire and rescue personnel and social service workers. There's only one additional position that's going to be added or we're proposing to add, and that's actually to support some of the programming we do with parks and rec. So, none of the proposed new positions are what I would call more administrative-type roles. Also, in the budget, we have to fund our regional obligations. So, Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, that is something that we do on a formulaic basis, based on the services we use, so that needs to rise. The Virginia Department of Health is one anomaly that I found in my time at this job because I think another kind of marching order that I have from the board is we want to be a good regional partner, but we don't want to subsidize our neighbors, and we don't do that. We've made some changes to other organizations where there was some history of that. However, we did discover that, to some extent, with the health department, our neighbors were subsidizing us a little bit, and we think this is because there was a very, very old formula they were using back when we were significantly smaller than we are today and maybe relative to some of the other folks in the region. So, we really need to increase a little bit of our funding to the health department to really pay our fair share. At the detention center, youth incarceration was very, very low during COVID, and now judges are starting to sentence youth to some time at the regional detention center, and so we pay on a sort of a utilization basis, so that needs to go up. I think a really good news piece of something that's getting more expensive is C cap. Demand for that has never been higher, and we've been working closely with Virginia Western to make sure that as many students as they can accommodate and they can raise the private sector match that they have in this program. I've told them that, at least on behalf of the board, I think we're willing to fund almost whatever that takes to make sure as many students as possible can go and take advantage of that program. So, there is an increase for that. We do have a planned increase in debt service for the regional jail that's scheduled in. And then finally, visit Virginia's Blue Ridge. We have predicted or anticipated an increase there, however, unlike all the rest of these, they get a formulaic proportion of our hotel motel tax, and that is trued up at the end of each fiscal year. So, they're receiving exactly every penny we owe them, not a penny more and not a penny less. So, if our revenue estimate is off either direction, that is trued up. And then finally, we are proposing to eliminate the operating subsidy for the broadband authority. The city of Roanoke also plans to make that same recommendation, and we have shared that with them. It's always important to be a good financial steward, and for us in the budget, one of the most important ways we try to do that is through making what we believe to be both accurate but also conservative revenue estimates. And I'll again mention the fact that I do not have a crystal ball, nor do I know anyone who does. And if I could really tell you with absolute certainty I knew what a house was going to be worth in the county in eighteen months, I would not be working for the county. The same is true if I knew exactly what a car was going to be worth in eighteen months, I would not be doing this. I think our revenue projections are as good as anyone around, and I've challenged staff to pull some data to support that thought that I have. But this represents the best effort that we've been able to make in revenue projection as of about two weeks ago. I think I shared this earlier with the board. It takes a long time to put together these slides, they're very intricate, and at some point, we have to freeze the data so we can actually give you a presentation. That said, we continue to get additional information on what really our revenue picture might look like, and we can continue to make adjustments up until budget adoption. But we are estimating about eight percent growth in real estate. I do want to separate something, though. We assess real estate on a calendar year basis, and in the infinite wisdom of the General Assembly, that is, of course, different than the fiscal years on which we operate. So, each budget year has two different assessment years of taxes blended together. We base the budget on the assumption of a real estate assessment growth rate of five percent next year. You blend that with what we have in the current cycle, you get that eight percent revenue growth. The line that I think is most risky is the next one, which is personal property. We are estimating that to be flat. I think very good arguments can be made that that number might be negative. And again, that's all based on the future value of vehicles. Fortunately, all of our other revenue sources appear to be either growing at or above the rate of inflation, which is nice, especially when you see a strong number like that for business license. That's just a sign of robust business activity in the county. And as you can, you know, back quite a few slides ago now, you showed that we've actually lowered some of those rates, but we're still bringing in very robust revenues. Moving in briefly to the CIP, I'm not going to go through this in detail at all, as you've seen this before, but the current year, the budget year, FY twenty-five, we are showing expenditures of eleven-point-six million and no debt issuance. And you can see, looking at the balance of the plan, you have both the blend of debt and cash financing. Looking over the entire ten years, which is two-hundred-and-eight million dollars, you can see the bulk of the funding goes to either new or significant rehabilitations of buildings and facilities, followed closely by capital maintenance. And I think I sent the board a picture of us replacing a very large HVAC unit at our public safety building. Things like that are very expensive, replacing ball field lighting, there's a lot of things we have in the capital maintenance line. Again, you'll see our IT environment comes up very strong on the budget list. It's, we have a lot of computers, we have a lot of computer network equipment. It is very expensive in today's world to maintain a robust IT environment, and those costs are rising rapidly. We do spend money to leverage and get far more of VDOT money spent in the community. We've got a very robust program there, and I think it's part of the catalyst that has driven some of our economic development growth. And then we do have to buy quite a bit of heavy equipment to do our jobs across a variety of departments. And then finally, we do spend some money on studies. I won't spend time on this slide to show you. We developed, again, more of the graphical view of what I just shared. It is very important for us as a county to carefully manage our debt. I will point out that these numbers do not include the debt issuance that'll be coming before you soon to pay for our three school projects, right? They are not in these numbers. That has not happened yet, so we don't know exactly what that will cost because we haven't been out to the market yet. But prior to that, we were just over half of our limit that we've established for our county for our debt as a ratio to our general government expenditures and a little bit over a third of our limit that we've set in terms of our total taxable assessed value. I think the lower measure is actually a better one because every county has a total tax assessment base, right? But you can, you could do things on the top, right? Your budget can always change, you can change tax rates and other things, but it's, other than organic growth and positive things happening, your assessed value is much more stable and rises more slowly. So, I really think debt relative to that is a better indicator, and again, this is extremely conservative, which is one of the things that helps us maintain a good bond rating. Now, in order to balance the budget, make a tax rate reduction and give our employees a raise, we couldn't fund everything, and I want to detail this just briefly. There's about two-point-three million dollars in departmental requests of a wide variety of nature. Some of them were for additional positions, equipment needs, just operating budget for them to do their thing. We're never able to fund all these requests, but we were able to fund very few of them in the current year, which is one of the reasons why you don't see positions in more departments than you do, and the ones you do see are all formulaic with the exception of one. And then another thing that we need to do this year in order to, again, make the budget balanced based on the revenue picture that we have now, we're going to have to defer some purchase of light and heavy fleet. That's something that we can do one time and have that still be responsible, but we can't keep doing that out into the future, right? At some point, if we're going to continue a solid waste operation, we have to replace trash trucks at a certain rate. So, to use the Rob Peter to pay Paul saying, "You can do that a time or two, but then eventually Peter runs out of money." So, I would look at this as a referral that we're going to have to address in the next budget cycle, but not something that we can't live with in the proposed budget. Another thing that's good to say about these, though, particularly with fleet, if revenues do come in better than projected, that's one of the easiest things to put that money toward, is fleet. And then one of the things that I'm going to do, and I hope this is not in hindsight a mistake, but I'm going to talk a little bit about how I think I need to manage this budget because of some of our revenue uncertainty, and I want to be transparent with both the board, our employees and the public, is I have a lot of concern about our personal property revenue estimate. I don't have a better number to put forward than to predict it to be flat, but I think that there's at least a strong likelihood that that could be incorrect and could be incorrect in a negative way. All the numbers you see before you are all in the budget, but since it takes so long for us to get data about personal property, we won't really know until we get well into the budget year how accurate our estimate is likely to be. And so, in order to avoid what could be some really draconian cuts to the budget that might have to be made quickly, I think it's a much wiser approach to delay some expenditures that are actually in the budget until we see the actual revenue or have a better handle on what that revenue will be. So, for example, if between July first and Christmas, it becomes obvious that vehicle values aren't falling, you know, precipitatively fast, and we're going to have the revenue we estimated, we can go ahead and start spending this money. However, if vehicle value started falling faster than our revenue estimate is based on, we've created some cushion that's not near as painful as the tools I would have at my disposal if that, if I hadn't done these things and that strung out longer. Because really, at the end of the day, the vast majority of our money is spent on people, and I would much rather delay some things that I can always catch up on than get put in a box where making people changes is about the only way I have to make the budget work. So, these are just things we would do out of caution. The last two, I want to speak to in a little bit of detail because this is something that I'm going to need to start anyway, just to responsibly manage our budget, which is, as I mentioned earlier, we've become a much more popular place to work, our turnover rate has gotten lower. We're going to need to actively manage our headcount because, again, we have, for at least the whole time I've worked at the county, not budgeted for a hundred percent of our positions. And so, we're going to have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. No one position would be stuck without being hired for too long, but, for example, we might have to wait a month or two to go out to the job market for a certain job just to create the vacancy rate that we need financially. And then the same thing is the concept of over hires that we've historically used in public safety to try to maintain our strength. As we're doing a better job retaining people, we need less of that, right? And those jobs, over hires, exist completely outside of the budget. So, if a department, a public safety department has full strength in some over hires, there's not money to pay those jobs. That's coming out of other things. And again, if we do have concern over revenue, I think it's prudent for me to at least foot drag on some of these expenditures until we know more. And hopefully, we'll know more by the time the budget's adopted, and we don't need to do any of these things, or it could be come August, we realize that these concerns are a little overblown, but I did want to share that. Looking forward into the future, we do still have a lot of financial pressure, and one thing that we will ask the board, I think, to direct staff to do, our CSA cost continued to rise very rapidly as is the demand for private day education. And when we've done some research and looked out at our peer communities and even some of our neighbors, our rates of utilization for CSA in general and private day in particular are much, much higher than many of our peer communities, and I think that we should work jointly with our school system to try to figure out what's different about us because this is becoming a very costly service. And again, we do stand out in an unusual way relative to many, many peer communities around the state. We're going to have to keep paying our employees if we want to keep the good ones. As I know from direct experience managing folks for many, many years, if you don't keep up with the market, you lose your good people first, and the ones that are less good are the ones that stay, and eventually you have a very mediocre workforce. I think we have an excellent one now, and I'd like to keep it that way. We do need to maintain adequate fund balances. I want to stress, again, the five-hundred-and-thirty that we've already committed to that hits us every year, year after year for our debt model. And, you know, inflation is a real thing, and it's hitting us hard, especially, again, I want to point out the vehicle repairs, even the ones we do ourselves, just the cost for parts or the cost for bodywork that we need, it's gone up a lot. And then, again, that software as a service, since we no longer earn our own software, we rent it, and renting software has proven to be a very expensive endeavor for all of mankind, as best I can tell. Just kind of the final note on all that, it really is a balancing act. You know, we've got some concerns over revenue, we've got some concerns on what the future lies, and we're trying to balance those three goals I laid out at the beginning, which would be tax relief for our citizens, strong and quality services, and then trying to develop the community against that debt backdrop. But there is a very positive solution to all of these needs, and I want to kind of close out the presentation highlighting that, and that is really economic development. To the extent that we can have robust and quality economic development and growth in our county, we can continue to afford high-quality services while reducing the tax rate because that brings new wealth into our community. And I want to highlight a few projects that really show this. The first one that, if I was only going to talk about one, it would be this one, was the Wells Fargo announcement last fall. That was the largest single-site jobs announcement in the Commonwealth last year, our largest single jobs announcement ever, our largest office project announcement ever. And in addition to adding eleven-hundred new jobs, we got to retain sixteen-hundred existing jobs, right? Because Wells Fargo is not adding people, they're moving people around, and it looks like they're going to be moving people to us, which is really good. they're going to be moving people to us, which is really good. And we competed very aggressively for this project. Our economic development team did a great job. The governor got personally involved. And so just to have Virginia win this project and have this not go to North Carolina, for example, is a real win for the county. But with these new jobs, Wells Fargo was already the largest single-site employer that we had, but they will surpass Roanoke County Public Schools to be our outright largest employer. And I think that's actually a good thing because in most localities around Virginia, and this is not bad, but your local school is normally your biggest employer. And when the local schools are not your biggest employer, what that really means is you have another employer of size in your community. So for example, with the city of Roanoke, when Norfolk Southern was at full strength, they were the biggest employer. It was at City Public Schools. I haven't checked this, but my guess would be City Public Schools is likely their biggest employer now that Norfolk Southern has shrunk their footprint so much. And for us, it's kind of nice to have a private sector business be the number-one employer, right? Another good example locally that we're going to talk about with Mack Truck is the Volvo Mack operation in Dublin. So that makes them Pulaski County's largest employer. So I think that's a nice thing for the county. I do want to speak briefly about the Mack project. We just got the kickoff of the year with this announcement. A little bit smaller numerically, but I would say almost of equal importance to the long-term health of the county. This was a successful startup. So folks that worked at the Dublin operation and the corporate Mack wanted to get into a smaller line of trucks than they had historically sold. So these trucks are the kind of thing you might make into a bread truck that you'll see at Kruger. So they have to be a little bit less expensive or a little bit simpler vehicle. And they made a prototype, and they were looking for a way to bring that prototype to market. And they looked at maybe adding some space at Dublin, but we happen to have a building that worked well for them that was already in the county. And so they decided to give that a try. And they invested about $13 million and said, "Okay, we're going to have about 250 jobs." Well, the market reaction to this new vehicle was fantastic. They very quickly had 400 people. They had a long backlog of orders. And then they said, "Oh, wow, we've got a success on our hands. What are we going to do? Is Roanoke the right place to make these trucks, or should we look at other places?" And they looked at a lot of other places. But we worked closely with them, and again, the Commonwealth to retain them in the county. And so now they've decided to add square footage to their existing building in the county, and they're going to make another $14 million investment, add 51 new jobs at first, but they have a lot more property and a lot bigger plans going forward. So I think as this operation becomes more permanent in the county, the supply chain people that produce the parts that these trucks are made out of, I think, are going to be drawn to us as well. So I think, long-term, just to have vehicle manufacturing of this scale in the county is going to be a really good thing. And I think there's going to be lots of good news to come. And we continue to have a lot of success at Tanglewood. And again, while we don't tend to think of it as much, meals tax revenue is a very good revenue source for the county. It's discretionary. A lot of it comes from people who don't live in the county, which is nice. And so this continued retail and food growth around the malls has been very good for our bottom line. And kind of keeping on the mall theme here for a second, the combination of the two Carrillion projects at Tanglewood Mall has really been transformative. Carrillion's Children, that was announced a few years ago, that has been a huge success for Carrillion. From what I've heard, their business and those services has gone up almost 30% since they've been at Tanglewood. Their employees love working there. That generates a lot of traffic, which generates some of the out parcels you just saw. Last year, they announced the expansion and consolidation of their behavioral health services, the outpatient ones, to the mall as well, that brought in additional providers, additional employees, additional capital investment. So the transformation that's going on there is truly miraculous from a national perspective with what's happened with some older malls. And the neat thing about this is Roanoke County has spent not a single penny inside the property of the mall. We've spent money to do planning. We've helped with VDOT projects. But this is all pure private sector at work, and I think delivering a lot of good stuff. And then the last one I want to talk about briefly before we close is Galen. I think this has gotten a little bit less attention. But HCA, Galen School of Nursing is part of them. But they made a significant investment in the former Allstate building now called Metis Plaza, 50 new employees, but hundreds of students, right? So we have a nursing college that's in the county, right at the other end of the 419 corridor. And again, I think the success of this building will also lead to additional private sector offerings for food and retail in this part of the 419 corridor. So I'm going to kind of close where I started. The themes that we had in building this budget based on input from the board was to try to give back to our citizens. But for me, in this role, the single most important thing that I do every day, what I spend the most time on, is trying to focus on robust economic development in the county. Because long-term, that's our future. That's our future jobs. That's our future places to go shop, our places to eat. Housing fits into that. So to the extent that we can do that, that's going to continue to give us the resources we need to reduce taxes but still maintain excellent services. Then last slide that has any content, the schedule. So at your next meeting on April 9th, we're going to have public hearings, and you will adopt your tax rates. And then there'll be two availabilities for the public to speak to the operating and capital budgets that we just detailed. And then finally, an anticipated final approval on May 28th. And with that, staff will be happy to take your questions. I will point out, as you all are all keenly aware, I am not the maker of the budget. So I have the experts sitting side by side here. Should you ask any challenging questions, they're going to come up and help me out. But with that, I really appreciate your time and patience and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kaywood, for that thorough and long but very informative budget.
I told you it wasn't a briefing.
And I will just say this. Years ago, Ford Motor Company used to say job one was quality, but job one is economic development, and don't take your foot off the pedal. And the great successes this year, I hope, are just a few that are in place, and there'll be more to come in the future. At this time, do any board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll start at this end. We'll just go that way, I guess. So as you presented this to the five of us, now we take it to the citizens. And so this is a lot to try to carry around. Will you guys follow up with something that's more like four or five pages, a condensed version, so we can know if we're at a Starbucks or a grocery store or somewhere, people say, "Hey, we heard you're going to do this, this, and this," we can kind of, it's a nice talking point. It's very similar to what we've done with our legislative...
Absolutely. And I know Rebecca created a document this morning, last night, this morning, that we used with one of our reporters when we kind of pre-briefed him. And then there's also a couple of pages out of this presentation. I think we could put together a few slides for you, but we should be able to have that to you, I would say, in the next 24 hours or so, something that I think you could use.
Okay. And thank you very much, Richard. That was very thorough. I appreciate that. The graphs, and it helps make it easier to digest all those numbers. I appreciate that. And the staff that did all that work.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Hooker.
So just a couple of quick comments. And first of all, thank you to everyone who worked really hard to pull this off. And I think we were somewhat involved in the process. So listening to us while looking at what the real needs were in front of you, I appreciate your patience with us. I just had a couple of comments. And on page, these are not numbered, on the public safety spending, there was a note of the seven new positions for social services. And I think you alluded to it. I think you said that the state reimburses us 80%.
That is correct.
And I had understood 85%. I know that that's small.
I'll look to the experts.
It's 85.
That was not a bad memory. I apologize.
No, it's okay. It's all right. There's a lot of numbers going on here.
It's actually blended, depending on when it gets closer to the month. So it's around 85%.
Okay, okay. So we were both right. And then going on to, oh, I see the numbers now, page 20, where it has investment in fire and rescue, social services. And you had mentioned that we also incorporate Salem's social services in our department and that they pay us back. And it's my understanding that that's about 30%. That Salem's cost is about 30% of that department.
And that percentage has been very stable over time. So the workload has kind of increased proportional between the two jurisdictions. So I do think that you could argue from a county perspective that while we've had tremendous success, we certainly have some portion of the population that hasn't felt that. And that's reflected in both growing cost and need for the personnel to deliver those services. Again, children in foster care being a very sad indicator of that. But yes, that is certainly kind of a tale of sort of two ends of the economic spectrum.
So just wanted that noted, that Salem does pay for all of that. There was a couple of, I was really encouraged by the C cap increase, actually. I think that in some ways, while it's not our public school system, it goes under the umbrella of services rendered and education for our community and preparing that workforce. And I really, I'm proud of that increase. And the last thing is on slide 29, where we have our debt ratios as a percentage of taxable assessed value and also debt services a percentage of general expenditures. And there was the note made and noted on the slide about how that does not include the increased debt that we're taking on for the three schools. And I would just like to have that in our future document, maybe, that what it is right now, but we know we're taking on that debt. What do those ratios look like going forward? And just be cognizant of that. But Richard, thank you so much for the information. It was very good. I think we all feel encouraged about where we are economically in Roanoke County, and we're certainly encouraged by the economic development. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Kaywood, I'd like to give kudos and compliments to you and your staff. This is, in my opinion, the best presentation I have ever seen. And I have sat through 30-some of these. I think it's very clear. I think it'd be an excellent resource for our citizens to see. And if this is online so that citizens can go through it, or in our libraries that they can flip through this document, I think it gives a very good overview without getting lost in the weeds of what the county is trying to do and what this board is trying to do and what staff is trying to do. It's important. We are giving back to our citizens. We have had some significant reductions in tax rates to our citizens while still being able to maintain an excellent level of services. So I hope our citizens hear that and appreciate that. And I also like, Richard, your warnings near the end. On a personal note, I guess I am concerned about capital maintenance. You know, at $2.9 million, we have a lot of facilities. And I don't want to get into a position where we let our facilities deteriorate so that we have a much higher cost to fix them down the road. We've talked a lot about having to maybe hold off on some of the light fleet and heavy equipment purchases. I think you told us, my numbers may be wrong, the garbage truck is $500,000.
Let me see.
$350,000.
Three or four was that?
400.
Four, okay. I knew we had an expert in the room.
I know people laugh at me when I say this, but if you don't think picking up garbage in July and August is a public safety issue, let's not pick up garbage for a couple weeks in July and August, and we'll hear from our citizens. Fire engines, Ashley, what's a fire engine? 700? A million?
A fire engine can range anywhere from 700 to 1.2.
1.2? Again, public safety. That is our number-two priority, you know, after education. So those are, you have given us the warning. If our revenues are significantly better than anticipated, we can maybe address some of those issues. But, Richard, staff, I think this is a fantastic presentation, and the best one I've seen in 30-plus years.
Well, thank you so much. If I could make just two quick comments. First, I want to compliment Rebecca and Lori and their team. They brought me this way of visually presenting as an idea that I thought was great because it kind of fits my style anyway. But I can't take any credit other than talking. Of course, I worked a lot with the decision-making, but the look and feel and layout, that was a lot of hard work. Scott Ramsburg helped us a lot. So I'm really pleased with the result. But I did very little of the hard work that went into making that. But there is one thought that you just raised that I want to share with you and the public because I think it's indicative of some of the challenges we face. Now, we have a large fleet, and a big portion of that fleet are police cars. Well, there used to be police cars, right? Our officers like cars. They used to love the Dodge Charger. I can't get those anymore. So we're being forced to move to a fleet of Ford Explorers. They're more expensive. They use more gas. Many of our officers don't like them as much. But I can't buy a Dodge Charger anymore or an equivalent car to that because they're just not being manufactured and made available in numbers where we can actually buy them. And you'll see the same thing with state police. So if you think about the long-term cost, that simple move from a car-type vehicle for your police department to a truck-type vehicle, it's just simply more expensive and unavoidable. So we're not buying Ford Explorers because we think they're better police vehicles. We're buying them because there's a police vehicle that's available to us. But that's got a lot of long-term cost implications, right? And there's a lot of examples of that with things that, in a perfect world, that you would like to both make your officers happy and minimize cost, but you can't. And I do think that the county's in a very good position. I hope I'm overly pessimistic with revenue, right? I'd like, I'd rather be that than overly optimistic. And I do think that, you know, again, our long-term financial health is good. We just need to be cautious to balance our rate reduction with that need to provide service. And ultimately, these are all decisions of the board. But I think that this represents a place we can live with, but we need to look carefully next year.
Well, I see the chief in the back. Chief, would you like an electric Mustang?
[laughter]
No. I hear they go really fast, though.
They don't burn much gas, do they?
I'm sorry.
Well, unlike Paul, this is the first county budget that I have actually sat through, although I have had multiple other budgets between homeowners associations and other boards that I've been on. And I have to say, y'all have done a great job of breaking this down and making it very easy to understand. And we've been working together with it. But thank you all for making this so easy for the newbie.
Thank you.
And I'll just wrap up with a couple of comments. Number one, I think this ought to be submitted for an award at VACO. I think I would also like to have a copy of this to share with my colleagues on the Budget Committee at VACO. We meet tomorrow, and we have to present four budgets from four groups. And I'm happy to say that the budgets we're presenting from my team is very similar to this, but put most of the benefit of reduction on the expenditure side. But we did also take a few increases on the revenue side, but not personal property or real estate, I'm happy to say. Of course, they may pull a surprise on us tomorrow and tell us something else has happened, as they many times do. And at the last minute, you'll have to make a change. Proactive economic development. Preached it for years. It's now come, it's alive and well in Roanoke County. And what do I mean? We're not waiting to answer the phone to someone calling us saying, "Hey, we want to go look at a site." We're out front, and we want to keep that momentum going. And I want to just say, our Economic Development Department plays a big role in that. It's one of the smallest departments, but most effective. And I know you're right there with them. So keep up the good projects and keep them coming. I know there's probably something you can't even talk about today. There's probably something you haven't shared with us because they're top secret many times.
And you do have a closed session. I might could tell you about...
Maybe we could do that. Maybe we'll come see you afterwards. But the safer grants. I know this budget is based upon 18 new firefighters for the new Bon Sac station, which is under construction at this time. And I hope that we are benefactors of the safer grants, which will also help this budget as well and relieve some of the concern about challenges.
Yes, I think Rebecca and our fire chief have worked on that almost every day. So we are planning to turn that in very soon, well before the deadline, and hopefully we'll have smashing success there.
Great. Might hear something in May or June. Who knows, right? There you go. Thank you very much for a well-put-together presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Item D, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
None.
Is there a motion to adopt all matters on the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepard?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item E, citizens' comments and communications. Are there any citizens wanting to address the board that have not submitted a form?
Are there any citizens wanting to address the board that have not submitted a form? No forms. Anyone want to come before the board for three minutes and talk? This is your chance, going once, going twice? Yeah, if you'll come on up and, have you filled your form out, sir? There you go.
I have a form.
There you go, thank you. If you will, you have...
Sorry, I'm late. My name is Joe Colcimo, I live at 4315 Crest Hill Drive, and my wife passed away last month. I want to compliment the police department, the emergency squad, the fire department that all came to my house. They were very helpful on a rough day for me. Anyway, the only thing I want to talk about is, I'm impressed with the budget. I did budgets for a trucking organization from Maine to Miami to Memphis. I sat in on a lot of budgets, and the main question I normally came up with, with my vice president, I was a regional manager, a regional service manager, and I would tell the, or ask the people at the local facility, 26 locations, what are you going to do different that your numbers are going to be better this year than last year? And it sounds like we've got the right people here doing the job, I'm impressed. All I want to know is, a lot of the people in my neighborhood that are widows and retired are concerned about the taxes that are going to go up maybe on our property. And so, I'm here to speak for them. I'm a widower now, so I'm going to lose my wife's part of the social security, I'm not poor, but I'm here to speak for the citizens that just consider how you do the taxes, look at the properties that people are making money on, you know, profits in their pocket, the investors that are buying up properties around the country that drive the prices up, not just in Roanoke. But I've said my piece, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'll fill this out and give it to them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to item F under Reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the reports that have been included with the agenda under item F?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we receive and file the reports under item F.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Ms. Hooker has a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If it's being done, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepard?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you. Item G, Work Sessions. We'll have a work session after this meeting, number one, to discuss opioid abatement authorities' Spring 2024 grant applications, followed by a work session for any additional discussion on the proposed fiscal year 2425 operating budget, and as well as the proposed capital improvement budget for '25 through '34. Momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for these work sessions. However, before doing so, I would like to move that the board go into closed session upon the completion of the work sessions. Item H, Closed Meeting Pursuit to the Code of Virginia as follows. I move to go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Subparagraph A, Part III of the Code of Virginia, to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property in the K Springs Magisterial District for a public purpose, where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The subject property is located in the K Springs Magisterial District and Section 2.2-3711, Subparagraph A, Part V of the Code of Virginia, for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansions in the K Springs and Cataba Magisterial Districts. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepard?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. The board will now recess to the third floor for the work sessions. Following the work sessions, the board will enter into closed session. The board will also recess to the third floor for these work sessions, and will reconvene in the boardroom here for the evening session at 7:00 PM.
I think I'm going to leave them. ...............................................................................................................